Good evening. Before we start, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance that if you could please sign in, there's a sign-in sheet at the back of the room. That way, we have a log of who all was here. I would like to call the Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 Planning Commission to order. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with roll call on my right.
Simmons Lee here.
Gardner-Hire here.
Roberts here.
McNeer here.
Brady here.
Bowden here.
Austin here.
Quorum is present. Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Are there any items that any members of the commission would like removed from the consent agenda? Any items any members from the floor would like removed? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by McNeer and a second by Bowden to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Regular Agenda Item Number One. Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, CUP-18-01, hold a public hearing and consider a conditional use permit for an auto rental business to be located at 915 East Lincoln Lane. Do you have a staff presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Michelle Cricks, Planner at the City of Gardner, and this evening I'll be presenting Item C, or Item One, a conditional use permit request for Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas. This evening, the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit within the New Century Plaza Development. The proposed use is classified as outdoor sales-heavy use, defined in the Gardner Land Development Code as a retail use where the primary business is associated with large-scale development and merchandise that can only be displayed permanently and year-round out of doors. The Land Development Code provides examples of this use, such as sales or rental of motor vehicles, large equipment, boats, or recreational vehicles. The applicant is proposing to occupy approximately 1,500 square feet of a multi-tenant building for a car leasing business serving the Gardner community. The closest car leasing business is located in New Century Air Center for another, by another provider. The applicant is proposing to use this space for leasing operations and for the parking lot, and the parking lot for the storage for the car fleet. No onsite vehicle washing or detailing will be conducted, and those matters will be taken care of off-site. The applicant anticipates daily car rentals will range from 10 to 15 per day. Hours of operation are 7:30 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. Monday through Friday and 9:00 to noon on Saturday, and they plan to be closed Sundays. An after hour key drop will be provided. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the approved site ban, site plan, or building elevations. This application is before you this evening to approve the outdoor sales-heavy use in the C2 zoning district required by the Land Development Code. So just kind of a quick aerial of our general location. The site is outlined in blue. Some of you who are on the Planning Commission 2017, this might look familiar. You can see with the site that this, you can see part of the shell of the building under construction. And the general location of this is just south of Lincoln Lane and east of Moonlight. Before you here is the approved final development plan that was approved in 2017 for a 6,825-square-foot multi-tenant building on 1.2 acres in New Century Plaza. Currently, the shell of the building is in the final stages of construction. An urgent care is being finished in one of those tenant spaces, and the approved final development plan and landscapes is what is before you this evening and was provided in your staff report. This is the approved north elevation of the building. The applicant is proposing to occupy the far-left space on your screen. So this is the elevation that faces Lincoln Lane. Here is the product of the construction of that shell building. This is taken from the entrance from Lincoln Lane. And here is the shell of the building taken from the internal drive just south of this And just a quick kind of reminder of what the utility is showing, that there's multiple utilities around the site and everything is necessary for this applicant to conduct their business. Earlier this year, the city adopted the Gardner Main Street Corridor Plan and incorporated that plan into the 2014 City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan by reference. This site, which is circled in blue on the graphic, is included in that study area of the Main Street Corridor Plan and has been identified as community mixed-use on the future land use map. The future land use map included in the Main Street Corridor Plan supersedes the future land use map in the comprehensive plan on those parcels within the study area. A 2018 amendment to the comprehensive plan describes the community mixed-use future land use as part, in part, as intended to provide retail and professional services for the everyday needs of the people residing or working in the community. And it is staff's opinion that the proposed car leasing service used is consistent with the future land use description in the comprehensive plan. Now, what was a big item for discussion and something that staff really had to take a look at was the onsite parking. And as part of the applicant's business model, a substantial amount of parking, of the parking spaces on the site will be needed to store cars. The site was originally approved for 73 parking spaces, and out of the 73 approved parking spaces on that site, the applicant is proposing to occupy 41 of those spaces. Staff analyzed the needs of the applicant versus the needs of the other current tenants in the building and determined that the remainder of the parking is sufficient. The applicant and the property owner have worked together and agreed on a plan for the site to ensure adequate parking is provided close to the other tenants, which was attached in the staff report. Staff finding, staff finds that the proposed use complies with the Gardner Land Development Code, that the use complies with the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan, and the applicant has complied with the specific use standards for the outdoor sales-heavy use in the C2 zoning district. Staff is recommending, the Planning Commission recommend, approval of the application, CUP-1801, a request for a conditional use permit for Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, LLC, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, a staff report dated October 23rd, 2018, and a site plan dated September 27th, 2018 to the governing body. And the recommended motion is in front of you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing item, so we will now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, and an individual representing a group is allotted seven minutes. If we have the applicant present, give her a time for your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Todd Parker. I work for Enterprise Rental Corp. I'm the Facility and Construction Manager. We're excited for the opportunity to be in Gardner. We currently service Gardner from our Alatha location off of I-35 and Santa Fe, and we currently service New Century Airport Signature. This allows the opportunity to serve your customers much quicker and local community than taking them all the way back to Alatha, Kansas, which can be, you know, 30 round, 30-minute round trip by the time they get done. So that's really all the comments that I have, but it just said, you know, we're excited to have the opportunity to be here in Gardner, so.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner McNeer with a second by Commissioner Brady to close the public hearing. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Planning Commission Discussion. Anybody have any comments, questions, discussion items? All right.
I don't have any, thanks.
Believe it or not, I have nothing as well.
I have no questions. I do like that the parking and number of spaces was studied because that worried me at first until I read everything, so thanks for the due diligence diligence of figuring that out, so thank you.
Nothing here. Ms. Parker, hope this happens. It's a great addition for our city. If you're not already, we hope you'll get involved with our Chamber of Commerce and be a vital member of our community.
I don't have any.
The only question I had was whether we needed to associate a timeframe, timeline, or is it just indefinite?
The Land Development Code does not stipulate any timeframes on the conditional use permits.
We're double-checking a timeframe of the code.
So I've run into this issue before. What the code says at 17.03.050 is that approval shall be valid for two years and the governing body may grant a one-year extension. That, in the position, that that language is similar to other codes. In the position that other planning departments have taken is that that is the minimum that's allowed and that you can grant, you can grant further periods of time than are required or than are provided by that, because it doesn't say that they're restricted to, to your approval. So that's, that's just interpretation that's been taken by others. I would suggest that you have discretion to grant for a period of time for longer than two years.
So do we need to define a time period, or do we just let it roll?
But my recommendation is that, and what I have seen tied with this is that you tie the conditional use permit to the applicant and the use in question so that, you know, if someone else comes in down the road, Enterprise vacates, you've got a new user in there, they'd have to come back through to the extent that their use would somehow be at variance with what Enterprise did.
Okay.
So can I, can I get clarification then? When it says that a conditional use permit for Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, LLC, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, doesn't that cover bases? Because it's tied specifically to Enterprise?
I mean, that, it could be interpreted that way. I guess I would make more explicit stipulations stating that the conditional use is tied to the user, Enterprise, Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, LLC, and that it's, it's tied to, well, and at the location that that's noted. I mean, I guess that kind of gets there.
So if we were to change the word "for" in front of Enterprise Leasing to, say, solely to Enterprise Leasing Company, would that make it legally palatable for you? Did everyone catch that? So "for" in front of Enterprise Leasing should be solely to?
Do we need to tie a timeline to that, or?
What, what we're saying is that if you're tying it to that user in that location, when he closes or leaves, then the CPU goes away. Conditional use goes away.
I'll tell you, this is not an uncommon issue, particularly with codes that have a strict, hard timeline on the front end that, that they will, or that have that two-year duration. Some of them are one-year at the, for the very first granting, that a period of time longer than the first initial term is granted, particularly in light of the capital investment that the applicant will make in the location. They simply wouldn't do it if all they were guaranteed was a one-year or a two-year investment return.
Okay. Any additional discussion questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to make a motion that after review of application CUP-18-01, a request for a conditional use permit solely to Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, LLC, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, a staff report dated October 23rd, 2018, and a site plan dated September 27th, 2018. The Planning Commission recommends the governing body approve the conditional use permit application.
Second.
I have, sorry, have a motion by Commissioner Gardner-Hire with a second by Commissioner Bowden, that after review of application CUP-18-01, a request for a conditional use permit solely to Enterprise Leasing Company of Kansas, LLC, located at 915 East Lincoln Lane, a staff report dated October 23rd, 2018, and a site plan dated September 27th, 2018. The Planning Commission recommends the governing body approve the conditional use permit application. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Regular Agenda Item Number Two, Mid-America Bank, FDP-18-07, consider a final development plan for a bank to be located at 18365 Gardner Road. Do you have a staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Linegar, Principal Planner. Item Two is for Mid-America Bank, proposed to be located just south and east of West 183rd Street and Center Street, just south of Casey's. This is some visuals of what it looks like from the site to the surrounding area. This is from the site to the north. This is Casey's. There is a vacant lot that would be between the bank and the Casey's site. This is looking west. There's residential across South Center Street from this site. This is looking east, basically at the site, and then beyond that is a sliver of property and then more residential. Then looking south, this is the retention pond for the development. Here is an overall site plan for the site, just some things to note here. It is located with Gardner Road, or Center Street, sorry, Center Street there until just a little south, on the west, and then a private drive along the south and east of the property. The site provides trash enclosure, a drive-through for the bank, parking in the front and on the north, and pedestrian access from the existing trail to the front of the building. There are three curb cuts into the property from the private drive, there are none, onto, directly onto South Center Street. The very first one off of South Center Street is an exit-only, and then the next one is an entrance-only, and then the one at the northeast corner of the property is a full-access. Something to note is that at the northwest corner of the property, there is a future connection. The preliminary development plan for this development shows an access road that connects the private drive across this bank property, across the property to the north, and then onto the Casey's property. The Casey's property is stubbed for this access drive to be completed. One thing we're missing here is cross-access easement will need to be provided so that we have that accessibility across the fronts of those properties. Here is the landscaping plan. It's very busy. I'm not going to go into a lot of details. There's street trees along the private drive and South Center Street. There is some buffer yard requirements on the west side of the property from the residential, so that is also shown here. Some staff findings, the site is capable of accommodating the building's proposed use, access, and other site design elements required by the code. Will not negatively impact the function and design of the right-of-way or adjacent property. Design and arrangement of buildings and open spaces consistent with good planning, landscaping design, and site design principles and practices. The overall design is compatible to the context considering the location relationship of other buildings, open spaces, natural features, or other site design elements. The architecture and building design uses, uses quality materials and the style is appropriate for the context considering the proportion, massing, scale of different elements of the building. Stated in the staff report, the materials of the building play off of the, both the Casey's and the post office building. You'll see little bits of that in this building. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The final development plan is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary development plan. This is discussed further in the staff report. This is a change from what is identified on the preliminary development plan, and a copy of that is also included with your packet. In the approved preliminary development plan, it shows a bank with a drive-through on the middle lot and then more of a strip center on, on the southern lot. The change is less intensive. There's less building coverage by making this change. There's less parking coverage. There's actually more green space with this, so it doesn't trigger that substantial change to have to revise a preliminary. And then, again, the cross-access easement needed to, for, across the property. The applicant has requested three deviations. The Planning Commission has the authority in the code to deviate from street types, open and civic space types, applicable uses and performance standards, building type and frontage types, site plan design and landscape, parking quantity and design, and signs. These deviations are well within your authority. This is a little different than administrative adjustments. Administrative adjustments have specific qualifications and outlined in the code that she, that need to be met. These deviations are permitted per what I just read, under the code, as part of the planned district. So the first deviation is specific building type standards related to transparency. Transparency will be applicable on the west, south, and east facades. These are applicable on street-facing facades, and the private drive that runs through the development meets the definition of a street, so these standards are applicable to all three of those sides. This is the west elevation. They are proposing a 29% transparency. A lot of this is dependent on the rooms that are inside. Along with landscaping that's proposed along the front, especially on, on this picture on the right-hand side where there is a door, there is proposed to be landscaping there to soften that. Rooms across the elevation from left to right are an office, and then the lobby, and then another office, and then the break room, which is where your door comes in, and then storage on the counter, or on the corner. The south elevation, requesting 17% transparency across this elevation, those windows are actually going to be the lobby, which comes out from the building, and then you're going to have a storage room, a mechanical room, restrooms, and then the window is a conference room, and then the teller windows. Typically, you don't have windows and restrooms and mechanical rooms. Again, the applicant is providing landscaping along that facade to help soften the facade. Additionally, the intent is, of the transparency is to be able to relate pedestrian traffic to the inside of the building. This facade and the next facade that we're going to talk about has no pedestrian access. There's no sidewalk along this side of the building. This is a one-way drive to get to the drive-through lanes, so there, it doesn't really meet the intent of needing the transparency as much as another elevation might. And that's the same with this elevation. The proposal's 21% transparency. Across this room, or across this elevation, you're going to see conference rooms where you see the windows, a deposit and viewing room, and then your teller windows, and then a mechanical deposit and a workroom, which is basically behind the, the deposit door and behind the ATM that's there and dealing with some things behind there. Again, there will be landscaping along the, on your picture, what is the left-hand side, that screen fence. That screen fence, screens, air conditioning units. So there's, there's other things. And again, not an area where pedestrian traffic will be or is encouraged. The next deviation is from landscape design. This is for foundation planning, area shall be eight feet deep. Proposed on the south and east facades is five feet deep. These are the areas specifically that we're talking about. Again, this is the area that there would be no reason for pedestrians to be. And so with this landscape area, softening it, I've talked with our resident landscape architect. The proposed landscaping material will be able to survive in five feet width, ideally eight feet, but the planting materials will still thrive. The third deviation is for parking lot design. Parking lot, parking dimensions for 90-degree parking, nine and a half feet wide, 18 and a half feet deep, and 25-foot aisle-wide widths. Appken is proposing 10-feet-wide stalls just on the north side specifically. Originally, there was a proposal to have a canopy over this area for solar panels. And having that area over there and then necessary to be able to, be able to get in and out of your cars, especially on the end. Parking stalls was why that was originally needed, the 10-feet parking stalls. They decided that they would leave them for their customers that have the larger trucks. They serve a lot of farmers and business people that drive the larger vehicles, so they are leaving those for those people with the larger vehicles. Staff recommends approval of the final development plan, FDP-1807, for Mid-America Bank with the following condition: To record a 26-foot-wide cross-access easement in the location of the north-south drive on the western portion of the property prior to the release of the building plans for building permit. And then here's your recommended motion. Just to note, technically, the property does have a standing address of South Gardner Road. That is something that we can change, but that is conversation with the applicant. As it stands, that's the address of the property today. So that's why you see a South Gardner Road, and the staff report refers to a South Center Street. It should be South Center Street, so.
Thank you. Is the applicant here this evening? I'd like to present. This would be a great time.
Thank you, I'm Dave Hill. Should I say, you want my address too, I guess? Dave Hill, address is 328 East 1400 Road, Baldwin City, Kansas. And here, we're a family-owned bank. We have locations in Baldwin, Lawrence, Wellsville, looking to come into, excited to come into Gardner. We do about 50% of our business in Douglas right now, 25% in Franklin, 25% in Johnson, and without a location in Johnson. So we're real excited about the opportunity that we have here to come in and put in a good location and be a part of the community. We specialize in real estate lending, and that's kind of our niche that we focus on, primarily, again, in those counties that we talked about. So we just, we'll be a full-service bank, and again, believe, you know, we want to be a part of the community and support the community and come in and do business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at all this evening on this item? Okay. Commissioner, discussion, from our right?
I don't have anything.
I've got nothing.
I like the three deviations. Do we have to add those to the motion if we all approve, or is that just, is that just implied?
They're, they're shown that way on the site plan, so in the motion, you're accepting the site plan with that date, so you would be accepting those deviations.
I didn't have any questions, but I love that there's the solar panels built into the building. I think that's just a green, a great green choice, so, thanks.
Nothing?
I don't have anything either.
All right. I don't either, because Ms. Hill already answered my question. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion on this item.
A motion after review of application, FDP-1807, a final development plan for Mid-America Bank to be located at 18365 South Gardner Road. And final development plan dated October 1st, 2018, and staff report dated October 23rd, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application as proposed, provided that the following condition is met: One, record a 26-foot-wide cross-access easement in the location of the north-south drive on the western portion of the property prior to the release of the building plans for a building permit.
Second? I have a motion by Commissioner Bowden and a second by Commissioner McNear that after review of application, FDP-1807, the final development plan for Mid-America Bank to be located at 18365 South Gardner Road. And final development plan dated October 1st, 2018, and staff report dated October 23rd, 2018. The Planning Commission approves the application as proposed, provided the following condition is met: One, record 26-foot-wide cross-access easement in the location of the north-south drive on the western portion of the property prior to release of the building plans for a building permit. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Regular agenda item number three. Price Chopper Tax Increment Financing, TIF, project plan. Make a finding that the Price Chopper TIF project plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I have a staff presentation?
Well, actually, I have a presentation for Bond Council that has helped prepare this document for you.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tyler Relsworth. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cutec Rock, as Larry said, the city's bond counsel. And in that capacity, we frequently assist with economic development matters. And so tonight, we're here requesting your consideration of a TIF project plan, which is very similar to what you looked at last month at your meeting in connection with the new price chopper. So as part of the TIF proceedings, the statutory process by which the city can offer TIF assistance as an incentive to supermarket developers, the developer of the new price chopper, most of those actions and decisions occur at the city council, and the proceedings are there before them. The one exception is at the start of consideration of a project plan, sort of one component of a larger development in a TIF district. The Planning Commission has requested to make a finding that the elements of that project plan are consistent with the intent of the city's comprehensive plan. So that request is before you this evening, and specifically, the project plan encompasses the proposed new price chopper, as well as a future pad site to be developed west of the existing QuickTrip and off of Main Street. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that, but the request is that you make a finding and that's consistent with the recommended motion in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, discussion, starting on our right?
I thought there was going to be more to it than that. I've got nothing, to be honest.
I have no questions, how good?
No questions?
I don't have any.
I don't either. So with that, I would entertain a motion on this item.
After review of the redevelopment TIF project plan for Main Street Marketplace Redevelopment District, project area one for a grocery store to be located northwest of Moonlight Road and US Highway 56, which is East Main Street, in Gardner, Kansas. Staff report dated October 23rd, 2018. The Planning Commission finds that the project plan is consistent with the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan as amended based upon the following, following findings of fact. Number one, the proposed project is consistent with the applicable future land use, community mixed use for the site, and the intent to provide retail and professional services for the everyday needs of the people residing or working in the community, including grocery and retail stores.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Brady with a second by Commissioner Bowden that after review of the redevelopment TIF project plan for Main Street Marketplace Redevelopment District, project area one for a grocery store, to be located northwest of Moonlight Road and US Highway 56, East Main Street, in Gardner, Kansas. And staff report dated October 23rd, 2018. The Planning Commission finds that the project plan is consistent with the City of Gardner Comprehensive Plan as amended based on the following findings of fact: One, the proposed project is consistent with the applicable future land use, community mixed use for the site, and the intent to provide retail and professional services for the everyday needs of people residing or working in the community, including grocery and retail stores. Any additional discussion?
This wasn't a public hearing, I don't think.
It was not. Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Concludes our regular agenda items. We will now move to discussion items. Discussion item number one, A. Text amendments, discussion of current standards and alternatives pertaining to driveway configuration for duplex development.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kelly Drake-Widward, Chief Planner. I'm getting to talk to you, and you're fresh. No comments, so you're all ready to comment, right? Okay. So, hm, I can't seem to get it talking to me. Oh, there you go. All right. Just so we could all start on the same page with the Land Development Code. I wanted to start by talking just briefly about what a form-based code is. And a little cautionary statement. It's important to understand that the Gardner Land Development Code is a citywide form-based code. So it integrates development and design standards into the code. Unlike traditional zoning codes, form-based codes focus on the physical character and the quality of the public space, or how this built environment and the open spaces that line a street frame or relate to the street. So if you look at that picture on the slide, it's about how that area relates the private development and the public development. So keep this frame in mind, please, when we're talking about the code. Also, these codes are not just about beautification. They are an intentional strategy for improvement. They are carefully calibrated to boost the economic environment of the city in a way that's compatible with the market, based on the local experience of the consultants and the people that participated in putting them together. So be careful about straying from the intent, the initial intent. In developing a form-based code, community input is obtained on desired character, resulting in an adopted proactive policy that's supposed to drive the desired form and implement the community vision. So we want to be careful not to stray from that vision. Also, form-based codes are very community-specific and place-specific. So we want to be careful of comparisons to other cities also. They are holistic, meaning they address both the private and the public space designed to create the whole space or the whole place. So this includes buildings, streets, sidewalks, parks, parking. And in the case of Gardner, it looks like street types, open and civic space types, building types, and frontage types. So we need to be careful to consider the impact on the whole, of the whole code. These, these codes also have closely integrated standards to ensure compatibility of all city-making ingredients, with the goal of building a better city. So they help ensure that private development is working together with the community interest. So we have to be careful when we change one part of the code, to consider the whole code. So in summary, the standards within the form-based code have to be considered holistically within the context of the entire code and the vision documents on which they're based. Now, you should revisit them regularly after they're put into practice and when you have evidence of the resulting built environment from those proactive codes. And then you might want to revisit when the economy is evolving or when the community changes its objectives. So right now, this code is based on the 2014 Gardner Comprehensive Plan as amended. Okay, the first discussion item, which we need your input on, are duplex driveways. The city council has asked the Planning Commission to revisit a couple of topics. There is limited evidence of the resulting built environment in relation to duplex environment at this time. This was driven by developer concerns. The Planning Commission is tasked with revisiting the standards and with all the things that I just talked about in mind. So you should consider if anything changes in the economy or expressed community objectives. As stated in the introduction about the holistic code, we have to look at multiple regulations when we talk about duplex driveways. Driveway design for duplexes influenced by three things that are interrelated. And they're also tied to other building types and other frontage types. So it's more like a web than an island. The building type standards for duplexes include garage limits that influence the prominence and the width of garages on front-facing facades. Amending the standard would only involve amending the duplex building type and would only impact that building type, but it is closely related to access widths and allocation of space requirements for hard surfaces for driveways that lead up to those garages. The frontage type standards include the access width limits or the width of the driveway and allocation of space requirements, which is percent of total hardscape in the area from the front building line to the front property line. A change to these standards would involve amending that frontage type, but each, that frontage type would impact multiple building types. Three, duplex detached house suburban and detached house estate. So you have to kind of think of it in terms of that context, too, is that it would also impact those other, other things. So let's talk about each of these three standards and the intent behind them. Why do we even want to limit front garages? The Land Development Code states that duplexes are to resemble a detached house in outward design and appearance to support compatibility within neighborhoods. So garage limits are meant to support that intent. Front garages elevate a vehicular-oriented rather than a pedestrian-oriented public environment and can have a detrimental impact on neighborhood walkability. Garage limits support residential design that orient porches and windows to the front of the lot. So that supports crime prevention, safety, and security through eyes on the street. This is something that Jane Jacobs, Pioneer Planner, first talked about years ago in New York context. Having people with eyes on the street keeps people safe. Garage limits support enduring property values through a more visually attractive vital streetscape lending traditional neighborhood character. So currently, the intent or how garage limits are defined is certain building types, due to their close relationship to the streetscape and to their close relationship to the streetscape, and/or narrow lots with frequent repetition along a block, should limit front-loaded garage access. That's expressed as a maximum width of the front facade at the front building line, or if the garages are set back further, a different limit, a less restrictive limit on the garage. And it also says, when front-loaded garages cannot work within these standards, side, rear, or rear-access garages should be used. So the intent is to encourage people to use those other options. So this is a prototype design that the City of Gardner commissioned to kind of illustrate the intent of the code for these alternate access standards. So if you look from left to right in this plan, the access strategies include on-street parking on the left side with the orange buildings, shared internal rear-access drives for the duplexes, the purple buildings there in the center, and also the pink buildings on the bottom, alley access, that's the kind of coral-colored buildings towards the right, and on the far right, shared driveways with side-loaded garages. So we wanted to look at other areas, regulations, just to see what they're doing. On the slide is listed Gardner's standards. So if the garages are placed, are the first thing you see or you encounter at the front building line, they can only be 25% of the entire facade length. If they're set back 15 feet, a minimum of 15 feet, they can be up to 45% of the entire facade, and there is no limit to the garages if they have the side rear or detached access, detached garage access.
Are we holding questions to the end?
Possibly. Did you want to ask something now, though, that goes with this slide about understanding the standard?
Yeah, setback, is it 15 feet from the start of the building or 15 feet from the road?
From the start of the building.
Okay.
Yes, that's a good question. Olathe standard is 50% at the front of the building, or 28 feet, whichever is greater, but no limit if they're set back a minimum of five feet or if they're side-facing. So that's significantly less restrictive. Blue Springs is the same as ours, 25%, no limit if set back 12 to 20 feet. So they just have a different setback requirement for the larger limit. Liberty, it appeared to me that they don't allow front-facing garages for attached single So this is a development actually being developed in Olathe that shows both of these things. The front-loaded ones are at the top and the bottom, and then the rear-loaded duplexes are in the middle. You know, I just had to use pictures, so the bottom one's still under construction, but that's what they look like right now. So I tried to help you visualize what's going on here. The ones on the left would not meet our garage limit requirements, either because they take up greater than 25% of the facade length, you know, right at the front building line, or because they're set back, but they're not set back the 15 feet, so they can't really be the 45%.
Question is for clarification.
Yes.
When you talk about these setbacks, this might be, Commissioner Gardner was asking, is that from the build line or what is that?
That's correct. It's from the front building line, so it's the nearest part of the building to the street.
Okay, so that's with the setback from the street to the front build line, is that correct?
There is a building setback, a minimum like 25 feet from the property line, but this just talks about how much of the garage can take up that front facade based on whether it's fully forward or setback.
So at the front of the structure is at the build line and the garage is set back from that line.
Yes. So if you look at that picture on the right in the middle, and you look at the one on the left, right next to it, so the one on the left, the garages are the most prominent part, but on the one on the right, the house is the most prominent part.
Okay, thank you.
So it's really just flipping those. So instead of the garages being the nearest thing, the house would be the nearest thing. So you'd have that eyes on the street, and actually setting the garages back gives you more room for parking.
As I look at that, though, the difference between the left and the right is you're looking at two-car configuration on the left versus a one-car configuration.
That is true, yep.
And to get the two-car configuration setback on the right, you'd need significantly more lot space.
Yes, that's true. I just had trouble finding any examples of duplexes with a setback, so I had to go with what I could get.
It's not economically feasible.
So, and that's something we'll talk about, too. Right now, I'm just trying to help people visualize.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. That's absolutely what you're here for, so. The top one is an example of one front entry and one side entry. It could just as easily be a two-car garage as a one-car garage, but so most likely the side-entry garage would be shared with the next unit over. And then the bottom one is a rear-access garage. So you probably have a shared access to get behind that building to access those driveways. This is, kind of shows the floor plans. This one does have a double-car garage, this setback on the bottom right, just the floor plan. But you can see, it is a wider building. It would require a wider lot, maybe not as deep a lot, but a wider lot. And then there's two that have the side and front entry and then one with the rear entry. Does it kind of help just visualize the options? Okay. Is it okay if we move on to the next standard and then we get, after we kind of explain all of them, then we can go back to the garage limits and see if you have any comments on that, or would you like to talk right now about garage limits?
I would prefer to go ahead.
Keep going, please.
Okay. The access width limit, the reason for them is actually to free up space for public infrastructure in the right-of-way. So all the study communities regulate the driveway width, at least within the right-of-way. So you want to accommodate the street trees, fire hydrants, mailboxes, utilities and such. It also helps support the pedestrian realm so that people do not have to walk across as long expanses of driveways if they're using the sidewalk, and hopefully they don't have to avoid cars that are backing out, or a lot of times cars park on the sidewalk, too. So we're trying to kind of limit that opportunity. Some communities do address driveway width on private property as well, and they do this by limiting the paved surfaces in the front yard. So most of Gardner's frontage types do limit the access width in the entire frontage area, but the suburban yard frontage type that you amended recently only addresses the access width in the right-of-way. So it's the least restrictive of any of the frontage types for access width. And currently, it's at 30% maximum of the lot width measured at the front building line, and this is because, you know, on those pie-shaped lots, on cul-de-sacs, we're not going to, you know, measure it at that tiny part out by the right-of-way, we measure it where the building is actually set. Neighborhood yard, just for comparison, is 15%. So that was amended in December of 2016. Now that frontage type, suburban yard frontage type, is meant to be used primarily on standard streets, and that really is only the preferred road type on arterial streets, but we've been using it on existing lots that were created, you know, per former codes, so. These are the area regulations that we researched. Only Gardner bases the access width within the right-of-way on a percentage of lot width, so it actually relates it to the development context by scaling the driveway. This is the regulation that will most directly affect the pedestrian environment of these three. Blue Springs does relate access width to lot width, except they exempt single and two-family residential from this. Others have a set maximum width based on the driveway configuration or the garage width. So of these ranges here, for separate driveways, regulations range from 18-foot maximum to 35-foot maximum, and for combined drives, they range from 24-foot maximum to 44-foot maximum. That's if there's two two-car garage, two-car driveways. And hopefully, you do have that in a table also as well in your packet if you'd like to look at that a little bit more. These are just some examples of driveway widths for various lot widths. So they range from lot sizes of 70 foot to 142 feet, which might accommodate that longer building with the setback garage. The driveway approach width would range from 21 foot to 42.6 foot total, although no one driveway can be greater than 24 feet wide. Remember, we're talking about duplexes here, so we're within that context. Okay? And then just to share with you the reasoning behind the limits on the front hardscape, it is meant to control the amount of impervious surface in the frontage area. So it's the only standard that we have in the Land Development Code other than building coverage over the entire lot. It's the only standard we have to control impervious surfaces near the right-of-way, and this supports better stormwater management. It also creates a more attractive public realm with abutting properties that contain a balance of vegetation with hard surfaces, and it makes it so it's not all about cars, it's also about creating places for people, basically. So this is the current standard, and that was actually revised. It was first adopted at 15% maximum, and like, whoa, this really isn't workable, so we changed it to 40%. And really, we haven't had problems, for the most part, with driveways meeting this standard since it was revised.
Did that change in 2014 as well?
It changed in December of 2016. We had, the code went into effect in August, and by December, we'd realized this is kind of off, so. So these are the area regulations. They're pretty, you know, consistent in a range, actually ranges from 0% to 50% because Liberty says you can't have a driveway in the front yard, but obviously you could have a driveway going through the front yard to the back. So the typical range is 35 to 50%. Ours is 40. There is one jurisdiction that limits the width in the front yard rather than a percent, but regulating 5% is common. This is a visual of the other access strategies that the Land Development Code provides as They are supposed to be for different contexts. Hopefully you got a chance to read through where those are meant to be used. There are some examples of what results from that 40% calculation if you assume a minimum building setback of 25 feet. 70-foot wide lot, you can have one 28-foot wide driveway or two 14-foot wide driveways, for example, on down the line. Okay, and just to kind of show you some of the stuff that's out there already, Willow Chase duplexes, that was not a planned district. Okay, so they did not have all those options for deviations that exist with planned districts. A lot of it was developed, it's been developed in different phases from 2002 through 2010, and then the, over the part for number four, was developed in 2017 through current. So our former code had the same lot requirements as the current code for lot size, minimum lot size, 10,000 square feet for a duplex minimum, and 70-foot wide lot minimum. So we didn't change the minimum lot size standards in the code. We really didn't, we only slightly revised the setback requirements, they're pretty much the same. The former code, it kind of went, different things happened with this. It did say you had to have two side-by-side off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit, and a minimum width, one-car driveway was 12 foot, the minimum width for two-car driveway is 24, and then it listed ingress and egress by means of paved driveways not exceeding 35 feet in width. But that was for the private property part of the driveways. For the right-of-way, up until 2014, the standard for duplexes was 18-foot wide for each unit, regardless of frontage, and multiple driveways had to be separated by a landscape strip at least four foot wide. Then in about 2014, I think they switched to Public Works Standard, which was based on the Olathe's requirement, which was 24-foot total for a one-car garage or 12-foot for each unit, and 44-foot for a two-car garage or 22 feet each unit. That's in the right-of-way. At least I think that's what they did. So this is kind of an example, you can see how we look at plot plans when we're evaluating these standards. So there's the image of it up on top of this unit and the plot plan that goes with it. It's 65% of the front of the building is garage, 37% hardscape in the frontage area, so that would meet our standard today, but it had 50% access width, which exceeds the 30% that we would allow currently. This one, similar, except it has even more garage, 77% garage, 32% of hardscape, and it actually does meet our access with the requirement because they tucked it in. So these are just providing you with some more visuals. You can see how the cars have a tendency to migrate over the sidewalk in some cases for these duplexes. They often have less problems meeting our allocation of space standards if they do move the buildings back a little bit further, especially with cul-de-sac lots. This one, even though, yeah, it's pretty much the same story, I guess, except the only one it doesn't meet is the garage limits. And this is a new one at Willow Chase, it just got built, and they did get administrative adjustments to build this duplex. For the garage limits, they just had to make it meet an equal or better standard for the intent of the code, so they proposed to use carriage doors for the garage doors and put in additional landscaping. We accepted that administrative adjustment for them, and then they had some adjustments, small adjustments, for hardscape and driveway widths. They were trying to build, keep building similarly to their past development. These are some other ones, Meadows of Aspen Creek, all front-loaded garages, straight access in and out. Here's how they stack up. They would not meet our garage limits or allocation of space or access width currently. There's another one. Also, it does meet the allocation of space, hardscape standard. This one is the Holt Graver addition, and the interesting thing about this one is it does use a shared access drives between the units. So if you look at that plot plan, only 37% of the front facade is garage, which doesn't meet our 20- meet our 25%, but it's closer than the others. 34% hardscape, which meets our standard, and 32% access width, which barely doesn't meet our standard. Okay, so this is where I would like you to discuss these issues, and perhaps, if you can, provide some policy guidance for us, and for the governing body. Starting with the garage limits. So generally, problems have only occurred when we have a developer who wants to pair a suburban building design with a more compact urban lot configuration. So bigger homes with multiple front-loaded garages on small lots. So this really doesn't help those duplexes look like single-family homes, which is what the code intends. It does not necessarily encourage eyes on the street and safety. And it does create a lot of concrete for pedestrians to have to maneuver over when they're on the sidewalk. But as I said, we have used that administrative adjustment process to overcome some of those objections by developers. And then we've also had two local developers who have modified their building plans to comply with the code more closely. And you've seen the cottages at University Park that are planned. And then we had another builder do a single duplex infill development. So we do want to consider what's, you know, the perception, if we revise the standard so long, so soon, after we had such a long and exhaustive process, to adopt a code consistent with the plan, without giving it time to achieve the results it's intended to achieve. And would those people who have met it, or tried to meet it, you know, how would they feel if we changed it now? If they do meet with difficulties, they can ask for that administrative adjustment. And so, but if you do think it needs to be revised some, these are suggestions, perhaps. Change it to 30% limit at the front building line, and if they set it back, maybe increase to 60%. Then you have to think, well, what's a more reasonable setback? Is 15% or is 15-foot a reasonable minimum setback? Do you want it to be less? And then just provide some basis for our reasoning, you know, for that change. Please, if you give us some policy guidance, so we know how to argue your case.
Blank commission discussion.
So, I don't know where to start. I guess we'll just start with the percentage of facade. So I was just running some rough numbers while you were talking about access width limits. So I don't have much to say about that, because I was actually focused on the first part, which was garage limits. But with the way that the code is written, it appears that it would cost the developer about $3,300 extra to comply with facade limits per duplex, if they are to setback by 15 feet. And I'm basing that off of an additional 660 square feet of driveway that they would have to lay. If that makes any sense. So if we're talking about a 44-inch whites, or 44-foot wide span for a duplex double garage, they would have to run an additional 660 square feet of concrete. So I think that that might make a developer buck, because if they're going to do 20 duplexes, that's a, you know, $70,000 charge essentially, to lay extra concrete. Given it's about $5 per square foot for concrete. The way around that, though, is even more costly if they wanted to put, say, a rear access. Because then to lay a quarter-mile of road is about $26,000, I think, give or take, for a personal, like, drive. So if they did a rear access, they would still have to pay for the concrete to get the rear access to the driveway. But I think that would be more cost prohibitive to do it that way, but I'm not, I'm not sure. So I guess, I don't know what I'm arguing for. I haven't made an impassioned plea, but I don't dislike it, let me put it that way. And I don't even mind, I don't necessarily mind the 15 feet, but maybe we can ease up on that. Because every foot we go back would be an additional 44 square feet of, if we're assuming a dual, or, you know, double garage for a duplex. So if it's, for every foot we go back, that's an additional expense of, you know, hundreds
Oh, wait, oh, wait, it's my turn.
So I, maybe that's just a suggestion, is the setback might be changed just a little bit, as opposed to 15, you know, maybe 10?
Okay.
Would, go ahead. Based on the 10-foot versus 15, do you want to relate that to a change in the amount of garage coverage space? Because we're going up to 45% when we're back 15, would you keep the 45, then at the 10?
Yes. So 45 and 10 would be, or maybe even, maybe even more, if that makes any sense. Like, maybe 10 feet, but you get 50%. So I would do both, if that makes any sense. Increase the percentage of facade, as well as slightly decrease. Not too bad, because I still want that variance. I think it would look, I personally would like to see that on more duplexes, where the house is more prominent than the garage. But I also don't want it to be cost prohibitive for some of the developers. So 10-foot setback with, say, 50% would be fine with me, as long as the, if that makes any sense.
Then we just have to take into consideration the 40% concrete coverage hardscape.
We probably just have to do some calculations with some actual plot plans and see how that affects it, because I don't know if we want to just shoot a number out there, but.
I think that the hardscape offset is not out of alignment if we're getting less garage and more building. That's kind of like a trade-off, in my mind, that we're getting, the fact that we don't, let's look at garage doors as we drive down the street. And the amount of hardscape that you're picking up is probably really not that much greater than, overall, than what you would have if they were side-mounted, like you were talking about earlier, so.
And we're just talking about the garage limits on the duplex building type, right? We're not looking at single-family.
Yes, that's all we were asked to look at, so.
Yes, sir, we're just trying to consider duplexes.
So what, what were developers telling you, or were they telling you, and this is what initiated the, what were they, what were they saying? What was their biggest?
Usually, the objection was that they had a different building in mind. That they built something different than this, and they didn't want to spend the money to design a different building.
Were they telling you how much, like, how cost prohibitive? How much were they actually incurring? Or did they?
Well, that's a good question.
Or, I guess, never mind. They're going to tell you it's millions of dollars that they're incurring.
I think it's the redesign cost as well.
Right.
Not just the additional build cost.
Well, that's what I thought you were asking about, was the redesign cost, and I'm not sure how much.
No, it'd be construction cost.
Yeah, actually, that didn't, well, that wasn't crossing my mind, but now that you say it, it is now. So are they bringing, basically, like, this is what we always build?
Yes.
And then, and then you're having to say, well, that's not what we want.
I'm having to say, that's not what our code supports.
I don't know. Can we, can I yield my time and think a little longer?
Yeah.
If I come back to it?
Yeah, we'll come back. It's fine.
So of those developers that come and don't necessarily want to comply to our codes, do they leave? Do you give the administrative adjustment? There's usually resolve, I assume. We're not turning people away.
Well, we've had one that left for a while. They're coming back for rezoning. I don't know what their intention is in the future. Otherwise, we've accommodated through administrative adjustments. Or they've made a slight change. So if they had two front-facing garages, they just turned one, and then redesigned the driveway, so. Which wasn't a big change for them. Because it didn't affect the interior layout. It still doesn't put much of the building up front, you know, but technically, it meets our code.
I, I'm not opposed to our current code, but I'm not opposed to if we change it. It does seem like, though, even changing it to 30% of the facade at the front building line, based on those pictures you showed us, that's not even, still going to be close enough. You're going to have to probably give administrative adjustments, or something. I guess 30% is not going to cut it.
I guess my thought of, it was just that probably is more typical of what a single-family home looks like. So I just threw that number out there.
I don't, what are our single-family home limits?
We don't have, for detached house suburban building type, there's no garage limit.
Okay, I was thinking through all the houses in my neighborhood, none of them are anywhere close to.
So since this is typically two garages right by each other, that's why we, we have more, we have stricter.
Yes, it's just that you have such repetition and such prominence of those features.
Okay, I don't really have any questions, and like I said, I'm not really opposed to the current standards or changing them. I just don't really want to lose developers, and we need all sorts of, all types of building types here at Gardner, and I don't want to limit us, but I wouldn't be opposed to changing it either.
Okay. Question again?
I got several things I wanted to ask about. First off, I'm going to preface my discussion time. I've worked with builders and developers on a professional basis. I also deal with what the market wants in costs. So I guess one of the first things I want to start, can you refresh my memory, why the percentage versus hard feet with the garage space?
Why, why we have the garage limits?
No, no. Why do we have percentage of frontage versus feet?
Well, it is percent of the facade length.
What's that?
It's percent of the facade length in feet.
Right. What drove that, what drove that standard?
Well, because that way, if you're going to build a, it's related to the scale of the building, not the lot.
Because one of, first of all, I want to start is, one of the things that you run into, I drive a lot of residential neighborhoods on a daily basis. And one of the things, and I'll reference it right here to Gardner, where we all live, over on Woodson Lane, all those townhomes over there. One of the things that is extremely, that's a big problem in that particular residential area, and the reason a lot of people don't want to live in that area, you know, put aside Backside 35, that's not part of this discussion, is those typically have single-car garages. Try to find a place to park anywhere close to any one of those residential units on a daily basis, and particularly on weekends and evenings, and you're not going to find it. And where I'm coming from with the limiting of these garage spaces, going to these restrictive limits will force builders to go to single-car garages, which exactly lies in the face of the encroachment of sidewalk space. Because what do they do? They stack their, they stack their cars in the garage, and it goes right over the sidewalk. So you're defeating a lot of your purpose. And where I was coming from, from a hard footage requirement versus percent of the facade, if you say, if you limit to 12 and 14 feet, 15 feet, that'll dictate a single-car garage for those types of units. If you go to 24, 20, or 20, 22, or 24-foot, that will allow for two-car garages. And then back to Commissioner Gardner, they question on cost. Now, does the 15% or 15-foot setback drive a concrete cost? It also drives the building costs to either setback, and then some of the least expensive square footage, and everybody wants more square footage. One of the things that drives square footage is the cheapest place on duplex like this that you can build is over a garage space. So you can, you can have bedrooms, and you can have multiple levels, and you can stack things, and it really comes down to an economic development, and an economic and dollar issue. And come back to trying to make duplexes look like single-family. The reason duplexes are built, because they cost less, just on every part of the scale. So that, you know, that, sorry, I'm rambling here, but this is, this is, these are the things that are really issues. They're not builder so much things as they are with the marketplace. And if we want to be competitive in the, in the community of Gardner, we need to really kind of stop and think about these issues as dollar and cents issues, as market-driven issues. And whether or not we're going to encourage builders and developers to come to our community, or we're going to drive them away.
So can I?
Does that make sense?
Can you clarify for me about your point about the garage, I mean, the living space above the garage?
Sure. If you went back to some of the, some of the duplex space above the garage from the pictures?
Yeah, I just, so your thoughts are that...
Right, okay, on the, very first one you had.
This one?
No, no.
Toward the end of your presentation.
Towards the end of your presentation. Go back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You blasted past it.
Keep going.
Right, no, you go on. Okay, right here, top right. The area above the garage is very inexpensive space, because it doesn't, our foundation.
Right.
You don't have the roof, you don't have the roof component over the garage in the house itself. Okay, so the expense is in foundation, roof structure, that's where your biggest expenses in building are. And here, what you're doing, you're maximizing the use of both.
So you're thinking that the garage limits preclude them from building that over the garage?
And it also, so, sir, a lot of these duplexes are owned by develop, are by investors, correct? They're rental units, a good share of them. Some are privately owned, but I'll address the investor-owned units first. And that is, when you start increasing the cost of a building significantly, what that drives into is, that drives and directly converts into the rental prices. And when you start driving rental prices above certain rates, then, then single-family housing becomes more of an economic choice for a lot of people. And what the builders and developers, and particularly investors, are looking to try to do, I'm generalizing here, is, is to build and try to keep things where they maximize square footage, be competitive, give people what they want, and keep the cost of rents down. Also, you know, another thing that drives, in this particular case, two-car garages create much less of a problem of the things you're looking to eliminate, which is sidewalk encroachment and, and safety over one-car garages. Because what happens there is people, you know, tend to stack car, stack, stack driveways that encroaches sidewalks. You know, it also increases, people have to jockey cars around, and the whole, the whole concept of trying to restrict the use, what happens is, the field, and I'm sure you probably heard, have you heard from developers that this, that these issues are concerns for them?
Well, I'm wondering if maybe we have a disconnect here, because our percent is not the square footage of the facade, that it's the... because our percent is not the square footage of the facade, that it's the length.
I understand.
Okay.
What I'm trying to drive to is two-car versus one-car limitations. One-car, one-car garage standards will fit well within your current limitations.
If they're front-loaded.
Yes, and that's typically the least expensive way to build duplexes.
Yeah, I get that part. I was just a little confused on how that related to the garages.
I think what it was referring to is if you push your garages back fifteen feet so that you get that extra percentage, you're losing that fifteen feet above the garage higher before you have less square footage of rental space.
Right. And looking at, looking at this duplex in particular, it can't, there's nothing you can do to this duplex to continue to keep two, two-car garages because the lots are too condensed. So if you push that back fifteen feet, you're going to have like the longest, thinnest run of.
Exactly.
Where you walk in and it's a hallway, which would be kind of interesting, a house. But it would be a fifteen-foot-long hallway because that's about how wide you get on the sides of the duplex.
Yeah, I agree with you that our standards require re-envisioning duplexes. There's not a good way to take these and make them comply.
Well, when you were looking at Willow Chase, the middle developments of Willow Chase, or was that one that had the whole development?
Okay.
Right there. As you look at this, when you look at the street number one and you look on the right-hand side, third or fourth unit from the top, that's how builders typically try to build duplexes. When you start trying to do things like over here in, in road three where the lot's narrow or the driveway's narrow, he's still got his two-car garages and those, there's not a one, in those first two rows, there's not any of these that would meet current design standards, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct, right?
That's correct.
So what's, what's happening here is you're significantly impacting the desirability of our community for, for rental-type units. And, you know, because people want two-car garages, their families are bigger. Yes, sir.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, sir, but I want to just clarify one thing. Our intent is not to force them to build one-car garage units. We have nothing in the code that keeps them from building what they're currently building, which are two-car garage units on the other side. I mean, just, just what you currently see. And if you look at number four, which is the most current set of buildings and they're still under construction as they go on south, they, they are actually very, very similar in configuration to what he built previously because the same gentleman owns all of those.
Right.
So we're not trying to restrict developers from building this particular style. What we're trying to say is, is that the code as it's currently written has these particular issues concerning the amount of frontage and hardscape and driveway widths. And so we're asking, are there things that we can adjust that would allow for this to continue but in a more, less restrictive manner than what we currently have in the code? So what we're looking for are methods from you to help us address this issue through code adjustments, which is where Mr. Gardner was going with this. We're not, yeah, through administrative adjustments or some other, some other form. We're not trying to restrict or make them build something that they don't want to build, but we are suggesting in some cases that a different format or lot structure or whatever, when they're going through new subdivisions where they have the opportunity to pick the way they want their lots configured, could give them some opportunities to do something different. But we're not making them.
Okay.
Follow a specific building formula.
I think where I was going, and this comes back to why I asked the question at the front end of my comments. I think one of the things that would be helpful in answering your question to me is, I think something that defining a number of feet, what's twenty or twenty-two or twenty-four of, you know, garage width in the front of each unit. If we go back to, you know, hard foot wide limit, that, that can be, you know, twenty feet would be sufficient for most, for most two-car garages. So if you got away from the, you know, the recommendation would be, if you got away from the percentage and went back to what some of the communities in the area such as Alatha are doing and say, look, I think their code's a little bit, there's a lot more, less restrictive than ours is, but.
Alatha?
It's actually a percent of facade as well.
I take that back, Lawrence had twenty-foot, Alatha had a twenty-four-foot max, over in Park had a thirty-five-foot max, that was a lot of slide.
That wasn't garage limits though, right?
Alatha twenty, fifty percent or twenty-eight feet, whichever is greater.
So what Larry was talking about was built with an administrative adjustment. And the idea of the administrative adjustment, we can allow for garage limits because it's a building design standard, is they have to equally or better meet the intent of that standard. So if they, you know, I guess the trade-off for building with those big garages on the front is give us some extra streetscape amenities or the view from the public space. You would, you know, have better quality garages, you would have additional landscaping or something to add interest to that street when you're putting that big blank base wall there.
I, I'm in agreement with you there simply because when you drive down the street of duplexes and all you see is garage fronts and driveways, it's not very attractive.
It's not inviting to, to the people, I think.
But we probably agree on more than we disagree.
Yeah, and it's just how do we do this? I think it's come down to what is appropriate to accomplish our goals.
And I'll sum it up and pass it on to Commissioner Brady. My thoughts are if we go to something similar to what, maybe not fifty percent or twenty-eight feet, but if we went to some percentage or let's say thirty percent or twenty-two feet or twenty feet, whichever is greater, if we went to some kind of thing which allowed some flexibility and put limits on it, I think that would probably be a, a good compromise. I'll pass on to Mr. Brady.
Thank you, just a couple comments here. First of all, Kelly, thanks for the thorough PowerPoint and all the visual aids. That's very helpful to have all those examples. I want to follow up on what Joe talked about is what triggered this conversation?
We knew that was going to be asked.
We, we've had, ever since the code changed, we've been tweaking the code to try and address developers' questions. We've had issues that had to do with side yard setbacks. We've had issues with driveway widths, driveway widths have been changed five times, six times in order to meet developers' requests. When we started, they were much more restrictive than they are right now. I mean, we were ten feet wide, twelve feet wide. We were, you know, for a double-car garage, that's not an appropriate width. So, so we quickly ran through several changes from August to December trying to get those things addressed. And we pretty much had gotten to the point where both the driveway width and the percentage of hardscape really weren't an issue so much except with duplexes. And the problem we got is when we have duplexes on cul-de-sacs because then you basically have solid concrete all the way around. And we have one picture of that that's in here that I thought was a very good example of that. But the, the effect you've got is overall is we're trying to, yeah, this is a good example. So the effect that we're trying to do is we're trying to improve the entire quality of the neighborhood through all of these various subtle changes. And some of them have to do with what you're visually seeing, the garage or not a garage on the front, the amount of concrete that's there, the amount of parking that's required for a duplex. We try and design these, when you have a double-car garage and the setbacks that we currently have, which can be twenty-five to, isn't it twenty-five to thirty feet, I believe?
Yeah, twenty-five feet.
Front yard setback.
Minimum.
So within that, and that's behind the property line. So you have room for two cars in the garage and two cars per driveway. That's four units, four vehicles. So we're trying to set them up to have four vehicles per unit, that's eight vehicles per duplex. That's a lot. And they don't want to have wider streets because they don't want to provide a lot of off, on-street parking. So the trade-off here is where do you put the cars and where do you put the guests and all these other things? So all of this goes together to create, to answer your question, sir, is, was, was thought through when we went through and met with developers back on the original code review for the land development code. And the suggestions that we got at that point in time were the ones that we came up with originally, which were too stringent and have been relaxed, relaxed, relaxed. So we've gotten everything pretty much down except for this one building type, which is still struggling. And we have one particular developer who asked for this to be addressed. And then we've had one other developer that, I'm sorry.
Well, so did that one developer contact a council member and that council member said, hey, I'll bring this up?
No, he originally came to us and we tried to, and we did address it through, through administrative adjustments for him. But it, it did go beyond that. He went beyond that, of course, and complained to city council, which is fine. We have no problem, no issue with that. I mean, we try and address it best we can through the code. When we can't, then we have to come back. And, and so the council and, and, you know, in trying to address what they see might be what commissioners, council minister, commissioner said a minute ago, which was, you know, a marketing issue and driving people out of town, which we don't want to do. Then they wanted us to review this with you again to see what additional things we could come up with to try and address these issues.
So we're having this conversation because we have one developer that wanted the conversation to go further. After all of these reviews, after multiple years, I think you said five times, we've tweaked this.
Well, we tweaked.
Really, is that the reason?
Driveways five times.
Because of one developer?
I wouldn't say it's all based on one. I'm sure there have been other developers, I'm sure Steve and Joe have heard of other complaints from.
Yeah.
People that just haven't come to us, but maybe have complained to them or complained to, to other folks. But I, I'm not trying to say we're all doing this because of one guy, no.
Larry, I can tell you, I've had conversations with builders and developers that have built kindergarten, built and developed in Gardner and at this point they said no significant changes are made, never again. And, you know, so, I mean, what I'm trying to kind of share with this is from personal experience, conversations that I have on a regular basis. And I think that as you look at this, and this cul-de-sac, yes, hey, at the bulb of a cul-de-sac, there's a lot of concrete there. And, but if you start converting those to single-car garages to meet code, then you're going to start creating, you know, it, it becomes an issue of which problem do you want to have? Which one do you want to solve?
Well, for me, the codes have been changed, evaluated by this group for years, approved by the city council for years, and we're back here again? It just doesn't make sense to me. At some point we say, this is what we got. And I, the threats of we're not coming back to Gardner again. People still build here. We, we've approved, in my three years, we've approved many complexes and developments. So anyway, I'm, I'm fine the way it reads.
Michelle, can you bring up the cottage?
Can I just say something? I, I agree as well. I mean, don't let, I understand what developers say needs to be taken into account, but don't let them dictate how we want our community to look. It says Liberty doesn't have front-facing at all and I'm sure developers go there and build duplexes. So, I mean, if they want to make it work, they'll make it work. Some people have.
Exactly. How do we answer those developers who have made changes and met our code and say, oh, we're changing again? Sorry, you made all these changes really for no reason. I would have problems staring them in the eyes and saying, sorry.
Do this suggest that the proposed changes, the ones you hadn't read, would those meet most of the complaints you have or are those still not aggressive enough? Because if they're not aggressive enough, I mean, I don't even know why we won't change them.
Well, they're, I don't know.
Maybe we're playing whack-a-mole here. We'll, we'll fix it and then something else is going to pop up and, and I don't want to play whack-a-mole.
I have to write that down.
It's recorded.
Quote-unquote.
What, and not to jump in front of your question, but.
Did you find it?
What, have we had any duplex developments comply with our new code?
So the, I asked Michelle to pull up the plan development for cottages at University Park. That's just, you all went through all that whole approval process for them and there was only a few of those units that had to have adjustments because of needing to.